I'd like to call to order the March 6, 2013, meeting of Milton School Committee. And as is our custom, I invite you to stand as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we will move into our approval of the agenda. I'll just make the obvious comment. The superintendent is not with us tonight. She's feeling under the weather. She is watching on TV, which probably can't make her feel any better.[51.21][51.21](Laughter.) But get well, Mary.[53.46][53.46](Laughter.) We'll see you tomorrow. So, on the agenda for tonight, we are going to remove a couple items. The Globe Scholastic Arts winners are down watching the football game, a basketball game. We will go see them another time. The superintendent's mid-cycle review under the superintendent's report. We will also take off, lacking a superintendent, tonight. The Health and Wellness Subcommittee, we're going to put until another meeting. And under our executive session, Item A, Negotiation Strategy for Non-Union Personnel Administrative Contracts, we are going to take off. Is there any other? Are there any other agenda?
Just in executive session, can I get an update on where we are in the superintendent's contract?
Anything else on our agenda? Hearing none will declare the agenda approved. Citizen speak. Do we have anyone for citizen speak?
Jerry Viti.
Yep. We have Jerry Viti.
Something fun tonight. I'm here to talk about a new baseball league for kids with special needs that's coming onboard. The email went out today from Milton Little League. It's been, this is actually a league that is sponsored and under the umbrella of the Little League, so.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute. We all know who you are.
Oh, Jerry Viti, 15 Longwood Room.
Thank you.[155.22][155.22](Laughter.)
Most people know my address, too, by this point. So, it's called the Challenger Division, and it's a division of Little League, as I said, for boys and girls who have physical and mental challenges, and they can be from age five to 18, or up to 22 if they're still in high school. This is a national program for kids, local branch for kids here in Milton. There are 30,000 people, kids who participate all over the country in 900 divisions.[190.12][190.12](Coughs.) We're going to play, we're going to get as many kids together as we can. It's really the brainchild of J.P. Plunkett, who should be here talking about it. I'm just getting the credit, or stealing the limelight here. But, and Dean Frecking has done a heck of a lot of work on this, if you know Dean Frecking. So, I've been talking to him more than my wife lately, which is good for my wife, I guess. But, we're going to have, we're going to have kids come up. Everybody's going to bat. We're going to bat through the order. When we get through the order, you know, we'll be done with the half inning. I'm going to coach a team. J.P.'s going to coach a team, so, go Rockies. But, in any case, that's what we're doing. We're looking for, we have coaches. We'll be looking for volunteers. It's on the Milton Little League website. There'll be information posted there. We have these handouts, if we need them. And we just think it's going to be a lot of fun, and we're really looking forward to the season. So, I hope to see everybody out in supporting the program. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question? So, all the registration is done online? And that website is Milton National?
Yeah, the website is, let me look. It's Milton National LL for littleleague.com. And you can go on there and look at the Challenger Division. So, it should be a lot of fun.
What ages did you say?
Five to 18, or up to 22, if you're in high school.
And the best buddies from high school? That organization? Maybe they'd be good friends?
It's, we'll be drawing on support from all organizations. So, I, and I, you know, I'm up here in part to thank everyone here in advance for the help in getting the word out. John, I know, I heard from Mary today, who's going to have this in her email blast. We talked about getting it out system-wide to kids, the whole system, and to use the, we'll use our PAC list and also the special education list for distribution of the program materials and information. So, Mary?
And just one other question. It's run through the National League, but the American, anyone can, it's open to anybody.
It's open to anybody in town. Yeah, we're going to, since it's the first year, we're going to try to keep it to residents of Milton, so we can get it under our belt and get going. But, I think we're going to get a lot of inquiries from other towns in future years. We're going to keep everybody's name, and the idea is to grow the program and have as much fun as possible. No score will be kept, so, except by me and P. Jen.[355.91][355.91](Laughter.) Anyway, so that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Take care. More? Do we have anyone else on citizen speak? Okay. So, we'll move on. Minutes of January 23rd.
Some of.
Entertainer motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Second?
Shouted in second by Ms. Bagley Jones. Any comments, corrections, amendments, additions? Seeing none, all those, call for a vote. All those in favor of the minutes of January 23rd, 2013? That's unanimous. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Mr. Phelan.
I take great pleasure in asking Margaret Eberhart, the president of the Milton Foundation for Education, the two co-chairs of this year's celebration, Ann Gattnick and Anna Christina Kenny, and their special guest, Marita Cronin, to come up to the table to speak to the group. As you know, the celebration is this Saturday at the Marriott in Quincy, and the group would like to come in, let us know about the event, and also recognize someone at the table.
You guys sit down. Do we have to introduce ourselves?
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, ladies, you want to go first?
Sure. Well, it's with great pleasure that we are coming upon the big night, which is this Saturday, 6:30, the Quincy Marriott. We are very excited about all the events and about the evening, and we have a special guest here with us this evening. Who, would you want to go into that a little bit?
Sure, sure. So, as you know, three years ago, we started to honor Milton alumni at the Celebration for Education. And this year, we were thinking about who we might honor, and our two Milton alumni honorees are Mr. John Cronin and Mr. Ken Quigley. But, a very special person, Ms. Marita? Marita Cronin, is tonight going to become our Milton honorary alumni, because we feel that she is an honorary alumni of our high school. She is an outstanding member of the Milton community, has given so much of her time and her energy to the town of Milton, and it is a great honor for us to honor her tonight and make her an honorary alumni of Milton High School. I guess she'll be the class of 2013.[510.03][510.03](Laughter.)
We have an early graduation.
Thank you. We have a diploma for you and everything.
We would like to confer this degree to Marita Cronin, the class of 2013, and make her an honorary graduate of Milton High School. This has some significance here. This is the first diploma signed by Principal James Chet.[537.66][537.66](Laughter.) Ironically, it's delivered by myself, and both James and I, and Marita worked together at Pierce Middle School just a few years ago.
Right.
So, I don't know how you graduate from high school, but you teach at the middle school before that, so, but we'll work that out.[552.16][552.16](Laughter.)
Thank you so much. I also would like to take a moment to thank Anna Christina Kenny and Ann Gattnick, the two co-chairs of this event. They have put together a spectacular evening for Saturday, and the many, many, many attendees are going to have a fabulous time, and we have raised some fabulous money for the Milton Public Schools, and we are going to make new trailblazing inroads with our technology initiatives. So, we are so looking forward to Saturday. Looking forward to seeing everyone there, and it's going to be a wonderful evening to honor the Milton Public Schools.
Anything else, ladies?
I think that pretty much covers it. We've come a long way since our first meeting here.
I just wanted to say, I hear that the tickets are sold out, so if people are at home watching this and saying, "Oh, yes, I have to get my ticket."
My husband suggested that he might be willing to scalp his ticket.[609.29][609.29](Laughter.) On Milton Yard City.
Yeah, yeah. 800 tickets are sold out.
Yes.
Very exciting. Congratulations.
Yeah, and it's a fun crowd coming, so.
Well, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, I'd like to thank the foundation, but also thank Ann and Anna Christina, because there was a sense of urgency in the fall, and you guys stepped in and did a great job, and it was a pleasure to meet with and work with the both of you, with your ideas and your energy, and you have energized a lot of teachers to get involved, attend the event, and get really excited about what the different types of gifts and donations and support and technology that will come to the Milton Public Schools and to the students and teachers. So, the staff is very, very excited about this event and very appreciative of all that you do and have done so far. So, thank you so much.
You all and they have been just incredible. I was just saying to Marita that everything, every idea we presented to the people within the schools, they not only would say, "Yes, sure, definitely," they would say, "Well, why don't we just add to that by doing more?" So, the level of enthusiasm and support, I mean, it was just, it kept us going, too. So, mutual, it was a mutual feeling.
Good. Thank you very much.
See you Saturday.
See you Saturday.
Very good. Chairman Pavlichek and School Committee, I'd like to introduce the Tucker Site Council, led by Marcia Yaretsky, to come up to the table and present for their school site council
Trying to blind you there with the.
You okay? Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. I'd like to introduce my site council. I'm Marcia Yaretsky, the principal of Tucker School. Peel Hollingsworth is a parent of our site council. Catherine DeRoche is a third grade teacher on our site council, and Oliver Truog is another parent on our site council. And we have two more parents in the audience here to support us, Elizabeth Thomas and Ann Finnegan, tonight. So, thank you for having us. The presentation that we're going to share with you tonight is really focused on student growth and initiatives that we've implemented at Tucker to promote student growth.
So, we thought it would be helpful to start, we used to speak to people, sorry.
You can take the handheld microphone.
Oh, that's okay. I feel too much like Oprah, I think.[808.31][808.31](Laughter.) So, we thought it would be helpful to start the presentation with a little bit of a deeper dive into the demographics that is Tucker, and certainly you all are familiar with this, but we, it's something that we work with every day, and it's the context that these scores sit in and rest in, and the work that the school undertakes rests in. So, we thought it would be helpful to take a few minutes, and particularly to compare certainly first to the district, the state, and then they'll also do some school-by-school comparisons, just again, to set the stage for the scores that Marcia will talk about further. So, certainly Tucker, as we know, is the most diverse in all the meanings of that word, community, school community in the district, so, and also more so than the state, certainly. So, our percentage of African-American students, 40 percent, and we have a high percentage also of Hispanic and white students being actually the minority in our school. Next, this is just a further breakdown of our, what now the state is calling kind of high-needs populations, used to be subgroups, but just a little bit more tracking of who our students are, again, comparing to the district and the state. And certainly you'll see that we have, we serve more students whose first language is not English, limited English proficient students, low income, on par with the state, but certainly double the district. Our special education actually is lower than the district, which is an interesting, particularly when we look at trends, we'll see in these demographic trends, our special education is staying the same intentionally, so we don't over-identify students. And our free and reduced lunch population is about a little less than a third, which is similar to the state, but certainly more so than the district. And this is a particularly interesting slide, I think, when you think about demographics shift over time, as we, as we know, and it affects everything from presidential elections to the school context over time. And so, this slide shows certainly a dramatic increase in our ELL population, more than doubling there. Similar with our low income, and as I mentioned prior, our special education actually is trending down, and Marcia will speak to that in a little bit more detail about how the goal is to serve, not to over-identify, and to provide services to all students, you know, in the general education population. Free and reduced lunch, again, doubling in the last six years. So, there's no excuses that we're making. This is just the context, and this defines the work at the school. Pardon me, there's one more slide. So, this is a more direct comparison of the elementary schools across the district, and so when we look at our subgroups, again, the high-needs category is defined by the state, you can see that the 40 percent, as we mentioned before, African-American students relative to the other districts, it's really, it's almost no comparison, really, when you're talking about the difference between 3 percent and 40 percent, just in terms of the students that we're working with, similar to the low income in the ELL. The needs there, just based on national trends, you know, are, there's significant needs in Tucker, and that's, for many of us there, what makes it more impressive, the work and the results that the school has achieved.
The next series of slides really shares some of our MCAS data with you. This first slide is our 2012 ELA data, and, again, just in putting in terms of Tucker into context, this data is presented in percentages, and we're working with such a small number of children, every child in Tucker is over 2 and 1/2 percentile points. So, in terms of the number of students in the advanced category, and this is whole school, not by grade, we're, in comparison with the state, in our advanced category, proficient, we're working slightly under, and in needs improvement, we have slightly over, and in warning, we have slightly under. But in terms of looking at the philosophy of Tucker, which is personal best, moving every student forward, our student growth percentile across the school is 69 percent. The average growth is 40 to 60 percent. So, we're working on a high average of student growth in ELA. And in math, we see similar types of figures. Compared to the state, we're working pretty even with the state in both advanced and proficient. We're doing very well with our students in warning, only 9 percent of our students compared to the state, and needs improvement, we're a little higher than the state. But that means, you know, you kind of look at this, we pulled those kids who are warning, perhaps, up into needs improvement. But again, we're working on such small numbers, we have to take these percentages and really understand what is the number of kids we're talking about in each of them. The next slide shares the number of students across years in proficient plus, and this is both fourth and fifth grade, and you can see we're pretty consistent. There was a spike last year from 76 to 84 percent. That's what, 6, 8? It's 8 percent, so we're talking a very few number of children there. But it's pretty steady. But again, the median growth at 69 percent is growth we're happy with. We're always looking for more, but it's above the average. And in math, we're showing stronger growth in math. But again, there's not large fluctuations from year to year. The green is the fourth grade, the purple is the fifth grade, and we had a little dip last year from 82 to 70 percent. We're talking a handful of kids again. And these comparisons are not comparing the same children to the same children each year. It's a completely different subset of children, so we just really need to understand the story and the children behind these numbers. If we look at growth, and growth over years, you can see that Tucker is, one of the reasons we got the commendation grant last year is because we've had high student growth. And our philosophy is to push every child forward. No matter where that child is at, that child should grow forward, and I truly believe if every child is growing forward, as a school will grow forward together. And that's all we can ask of children. And we say every day after the Pledge of Allegiance, "Do your best work, not your fastest." And it's kind of a mantra in the school, and not your slowest. We had to add that as well. So, our fourth graders have been fairly consistent with 60 percent growth, which is the high average, and our fifth graders in ELA have had very high student growth, last year at 87 percent, which is some of the highest in the state. If you look at the whole state and you look at student growth across the state, we're in the top five in ELA in fifth grade. In math, we've had, again, pretty consistent growth, average growth in fourth grade, and in fifth grade, we've had above-average growth. Last year, we went from 94.5 to 73 percent. It's really unrealistic for us to expect that we're going to hit the 90 percentile in student growth year after year, but 73 percent is certainly growth that we're very happy with, and if we continue with these growth percentiles across the board, Tucker will continue to move forward. So, because of our growth, and we have met the narrowing of the proficiency gap in all subgroups, as a school, across all subgroups, we've met the targets of the state. So, we're very happy with that trend and with that growth. So, the big question, is Tucker making progress in closing the achievement gap? Yes. We rated above target in ELA in all students and in all subgroups. We rated above target in math for all students in all subgroups, and we received extra credit for ELA in our low-income subgroup, and ELA in our white subgroup, and in math, in our African-American subgroup. And because of this, last year, Tucker was rated and now ranked a Level 1 school. And it's our first year in being ranked a Level 1 school in the United States. So, we looked a little deeper, and we looked at the subgroups that we are really targeting in terms of narrowing the achievement gap. And in the African-American subgroup, you can see over the last five years, in ELA, in math, and in science, these students have increased in terms of their achievement, and we have lowered the gap in ELA from 2008. We were minus 22, almost 23, and now we're at negative 15. So, that's a pretty significant. Our students went up from 73.2, this is the CPI, the overall rating, to 76.3. And you can see similar trends. Math has a much higher trend. We're doing very well with our students in math, particularly. And in science, we've increased the proficiency in science as well in that subgroup. Our site council was particularly interested in the gap between males and females, and looking to see if there was a difference in that. And early on, it seems like the females were behind our males in terms of these ELA and in math and in science, and we've made progress in growing our female students up in both math and in science. And our males have increased in terms of their ELA, which again, shows a positive trend in reaching the students that we haven't reached in the past. Our low-income students, we have shown an increase in both ELA from negative 17 to 13, to negative 13, and in math, but science, we still continue to struggle with in our low-income subgroup. It's an area we need to work on. The next slide, I think, shows a better picture of growth, and what we did in this slide is show cohort growth over three years. This is comparing same kids to same kids, and how did they grow as they worked their way through the grades of Tucker. And you can see in ELA, let's see, what color? These are, blue is, blue is our ELA in third grade, and then in fourth grade, and then in fifth grade, how our students grew, grew from 83.6 to 90.6 in fifth grade, and in math, over three years, growing from 80 to 88.8 percent. This, I believe, really shows a truer picture of how we're able to grow the students, and what we've said in the past is, if we have our students and we hold on to our students and we have them over time, we can grow them. The next slide shows those cohort subgroups again, and these are the subgroups that we've really targeted in terms of closing the achievement gap. The chart on the left is our African-American Black subgroup, and you can see that there's a positive trend in terms of growth in that subgroup, and in our low income as well. And again, this is the same children over time, which shows a better trend. Because our, Tucker is small, and one of the things I want to assure you of is, we know every single student. We know every single student's scores. We know every single student's history. We know where they are. No one's hiding on us. And so, we took a deeper look, and we were looking at, well, who are these students, and can we see a pattern? And one of the things that really popped to us when we looked at that is the number of new students arriving at Tucker each year. And we just looked at students in warning. For example, last year in grade three, five students were in warning, three were brand-new to the school, and one of those three was brand-new ELL and just learning to speak English. And across the board, in grade four, half the students were new to the school. And in grade five, we had two new students, two students in the warning category who were new to the school. This year, in grade five, we have 11 new students in our fifth grade that entered Tucker School this year. In our third grade, you, Kat?
Just five in my class.
So, five out of 20 students in Kat DeRoche's class is new to Tucker this year. So, we really wanted to take a deeper look at, who are the students? And now, is there something more specific we need to do as new students enter the school? So, one of the things we quickly do is we assess the students, doing different formative assessments, exactly, who are you? What is your reading level? What is your math level? Where are the gaps? And we're going to be talking a little bit about this RTI model, these power blocks that we've initiated to help these students. But that gives you kind of a picture of, kind of, the detail of which we can identify students and help address their needs. So, Catherine is going to talk about some of the initiatives we've implemented.
So, taking a look at this data, some of the implications that Marcia was referring to have to do with keeping an eye on our students and knowing them, ins and outs in math and reading. And so, with those school-wide assessments, we've been meeting as grade team levels and also in vertical team levels, which means there'll be a representative from K. 1 and 2 to talk about, what do they know in kindergarten? What does that mean for first graders? How does that then inform what they need to know for second grade, sort of, to use a common language? That also would happen in 3, 4, and 5. So, consistency with homework, making sure that we're expecting more and more each year, instead of sort of an inconsistent expectation. Marcia mentioned RTI, which is Response to Intervention, also known as power blocks. And what that means is, we take our students and we look at their assessments, how, what we know about them as classroom teachers, what we've heard from their previous teachers, and we break them into small groups, and for 30 minutes each day, this is five days a week, for half an hour in math and for half an hour in reading, we have separated them into groups, small groups, depending on the need. So, higher need will be a smaller group if they're on. If they're on grade level or above, it might be a bigger group. And we're able to work with them as learners in very similar ways. So if you have below-benchmarks students, you're able to address the gaps that they may be having in math or reading, which has worked beautifully. I know from what I'm hearing from teachers, it's like, we have an eye on every part of their learning. So I'll see them with the whole group lesson, but I can go next door and ask my co-tea, you know, the teacher that works next to me, if there are any specifics maybe in the reinforcement and pulling small groups after the mini lesson, or something like that. So we're really finding it to be another way to keep track of student learning. And the kids love it, too. They think it's really fun to have small group learning. They see a different teacher, possibly they work with different kids. So it's really been beneficial to teachers and students in sort of identifying needs and giving support where it's needed. For mastery learning, the third block down, really what that means is if students aren't achieving an 85% or higher, that tells us as teachers and instructors that we didn't meet their needs in understanding the material. So we go back and reteach and reassess, whether it's the first, the initial assessment that we gave, or a different way to assess their understanding. And increased instructional time through various initiatives. Title I Homework Club, for four days a week, Monday through Thursday, there's a 45-minute block, it's sort of like a study hall, for students that have been referred by their classroom teacher that need extra support and sort of one-on-one help with their homework. It's a very quiet room. The kids really seem to enjoy it. But it's a way to sort of, again, keep an eye on those students. Morning math happens Tuesday to Thursday for 45 minutes. And that, again, is small-group math. They're given sort of specified learning on different content, where those gaps are, that they've been identified in assessment, where they need support, maybe just different approaches or more time in practicing that math skill. Title I Summer Scholars is our summer program, just to keep the children learning and in a routine throughout the summer. Very, you know, pointed academics, but also in that there's a fun component as well in the afternoon. And Study Island has been, continued to be, a huge help because it's common core aligned, and it looks like the tests that they take. It's also fun for them, there are games and things like that. So these are all just ways that we feel we're keeping an eye on every student so we can get to know them better and make sure, as Marcia says, that we're growing them forward.
So those are the various initiatives that we've been able to implement, both through the support of Milton Public Schools and through our Title I grant. And it provides that extended time on learning, but also that targeted small-group instruction and to meet the needs of learners. The ongoing assessment that we do, we have trimester assessments. We also have end-of-unit assessments with our new math assessments. We're using that model to build ELA assessments. We're able to make those groups flexible and to base them on, not just where the kids are at, but where their needs are at, their skill level needs are at, and fill in those kind of holes, those Swiss cheese holes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any questions, Ms. Bedera?
I'd just like to say, you know, great job. One of the things, when I toured your school, I was so impressed with. And I think Principal Yuraski said, you know, she asked her teachers to be pioneers and do different things outside the box because you have a different population, which, you know, offers its own challenges, but also inspiration. So I was so impressed with some of the things you do to work with that. And the idea of having students transfer in at fifth grade, and that many students is such a challenge. And I think that you should share what you do with some of the other schools, especially the higher levels, because the research on students transferring into schools, you know, is immense on what kind of challenges that brings. And if we can address those needs, they can do so much better. So I think those ideas are so exciting, what you do. And so definitely try to share those with other people. The other thing I was going to say is that the, I'm just wondering, the fifth-grade scores are so, seem to take a huge jump at all areas, from growth to actual scores, from 4th to 5th grade. Do you have any insight on what's going on there? Because it's just striking to me.
I think if you look at the state scores, you're going to see a jump in fifth grade. Well, one thing, the test is very different from the 4th-grade test. Half the points on the 4th-grade test are writing. It's the long comp, and then there's more open responses. So that throws a curveball between the 3rd-grade test and the 5th-grade test in terms of what they're being asked. But I think a couple initiatives we've done in 5th grade have been very useful. And one of them is that we have teachers teaching to their specialty. Tui Nguyen teaches all the math. She's a wonderful math teacher. She's one of the strongest math teachers in the state. Chris Doyle is very strong in ELA. She's one of the strongest ELA teachers in the state. And so having teachers teach through their strengths has been very positive. We've also, we integrate the students in 5th grade so that the English students, the co-taught students, and the French students are integrated for 70% of the day. It does create a new dynamic when you're a very small school, and in the early grades, they're always together. There's very little movement. When you integrate the kids and there's a new dynamic, there's a new makeup, there's a new sense of class, there's a new sense of class culture, a new sense of competition that comes from that. And I think, I believe students feed off of that with one another. We're also able, because teachers have this specialty, to offer kind of extra, what we call power blocks of time. So if students in the afternoon do need more math help, we're able to give them that extra 30 minutes. If they do need more ELA help, they get that time. The other thing that we've done very well in 5th grade is increase our open-response scores. We got the formula down. These kids know how to write an open response. They understand, we, actually, this came across because the administrators go on learning walks to all the schools. And it was two years ago, when we were on a learning walk at the Pierce School, that I was listening to them talk about empower in these things called Fred's and Say More's. And a Fred is a fact, a reason, evidence, or a detail. And then you say more about it. You explain why that evidence supports your answer. And it only made sense that if they're going to use that language at the middle school, we're going to give our kids the head-up on it and use that same language with our 5th graders. And they were just ready, they were developmentally ready for it. And the teachers did some PD around it, they worked together with it. And we took that on, that language on. And that really has helped the kids understand the framework of what's expected in those open responses. So that has been a big increase in the scores as well. So I think just those combination of those things has been very powerful.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Walker?
Well, let me first say, we are very, very proud of what you and your team have been able to accomplish.
Mike?
I'm sure you are as well. And I think it would be fair to say that you have some of the toughest challenges in the district, and you've been able to more than meet those. So what you're doing is working, there's no question about that. I, just a couple of questions. One, on the charts where you showed how the gap is closing, and it is in every case, except low-income science. What do you think the, what's going on there? Is it not focused on that for as long a period of time? Or what do you think it is?
Well, I think, you know, I think as a district, we know we have work to do in science, in terms of the curriculum. But I also believe, science has a lot to do with what kids bring to the table, that cultural stock, the background knowledge children have about the world and about experiences. And that's a gap that we really need to fill more with our low-income kids in filling in those experiences, those early experiences that children have at wonderful preschools, when they're studying about dinosaurs and rocks and plant life and all that kind of stuff. And the just life experiences that children get to experience with their families, that there could be an uneven gap in terms of when economics is different, do they get all those experiences? And science has very much to do with that. It's not simply just reading the material and then responding to it like they can in ELA. So I do think that that's something that we do need to work on. And we think about that a lot in terms of even starting at our kindergarten classrooms. How do we build those foundational experiences of things that we just expect kids to know? I think that's a big piece of it.
On Study Island, any issues with access, internet access, and that being a problem?
For some students, it's a problem. We have students coming before school. And through our Homework Club, we have students being able to access the computer lab after school. We have teachers who have manned the computer lab during recess time, and students being able to go in at that time. And many of our students do go to our after-school, our ACE program, and they're able to access the computer lab at that time as well. So we've reached out to families that may not have computer access. Actually, today, I got an email from a parent, said, "My computer broke down. I want my child to practice a couple ELA examples on the MCAS. Do you mind photocopying some of the old passages for me?" So we sent home a packet with that child today. So we have the data from just our database on who's receiving emails and who's not receiving emails. And we're able to locate those families who don't have that access and try to provide that support for them.
Great.
Question?
It's okay. I feel like I should know this question, but do we have RTI in the whole district?
We have different versions of RTI throughout the district.
I wanted to know about the RTI, because it does, if we had it in the whole district, it does seem like it's a great thing around your differentiated instruction. And I felt that I should know that.
All the schools are piloting an RTI model. We piloted last year in 3rd grade, where the 3rd-grade teachers mixed up the students. And when we do it, we look at the students across the grade level. It was very successful. The 3rd-grade team did a great job of piloting it last year. And when we looked at our data, we felt like we were always doing well for our students who were, who needed extra support. And it was difficult for teachers to reach the students who were more in the proficient level and moving them into advanced. And so this idea of power blocks, is kind of an informal name of RTI, we're able to push in. And it was a scheduling challenge, for sure. But I'm able to push in special ed, our ELL teachers, use my classroom teachers at the same time, and my Title I teachers at a grade level at one time. So we'll have about five or six teachers at one time pushing in and breaking students up. And I think what the teachers are seeing is they're really able to help the students who are working at grade level and above with those challenges, because that's our task, too, that every student moves forward. And to push those students and give them that undivided time, half-hour a day of reading and half-hour a day of math.
Can I just follow up to that? So that's what my question is going to be about resources, is how are you managing those small groups of instruction when you've got kids five or 10, or whatever they are? That's challenging for teachers. So I was wondering about resources, which you just answered. It's a magical scheduling, pluck-it-out-of-the-air-type thing. And then you did the pilot in grade three, so wouldn't it start in grade one? Is an RTI?
Last year, we piloted in grade three. Do you want to talk about that?
So last year, it was sort of informal. It started, the 3rd-grade team, so there were four of us, two in the co-taught, myself, and the French teacher. And it really, the French schedule was a little tricky to work with. So we did, at times, pull that way. But we were finding in the co-taught and in the English strand, we had more students that either, that we, you know, more extreme in some ways. And so we planned out, you know, on Fridays, let's, after our unit test, let's look at the data and see. All right, so there are, you know, seven kids that aren't getting this concept on time. And there are five that need help with number patterns. And, you know, we sort of broke it up that way, based on the data we got from unit assessments. And so about every, we do one about every two or three weeks, probably three weeks more so. And we'd make a new group. And so once, twice, maybe three times a week, we'd take groups that way. And we'd target that skill, and then, for part of the time. And then we'd do math games, so we'd address more skills. And we just found it was a great way, again, to get those gaps filled. And also, you know, it was fun for the children. And, you know, you got to see different kids, you got to sort of use different language, play around with what might work and what might be a different way to approach it, or, I don't know. So we found that it was really helpful. And it's really been the same way now, this whole year. So we've been doing it since September in both reading and math. And I've seen huge gains for both the proficient and also the below-benchmark.
Okay. Thank you.
So this year, we are doing it grades one through four. Our 5th grade has been very successful in math. It's kind, we're not going to touch it right now. What they're doing is working. And their schedule is very complicated because they switch classes. But grades one through four. Our goal next year is to, because we have two 3rd grades in French, we have a bubble class right now this year. It's half-day English, half-day French, and then they flip. We weren't able to include our 3rd graders in the French class. We do it a different way, so we can pull specific kids who might need that extra support, and they're added into the groups. But next year, our goal is to go straight through, through 3rd grade and include that group. But 4th grade will be our bubble group next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that really wonderful presentation. And I had also had questions about the power blocks. And I think you've answered most of my questions. One question I did have about that was, or not really a question, but more a comment. What's wonderful during that kind of an opportunity is that you're not only reaching the kids who need extra help, but you're truly able to differentiate and take those kids that are meeting the benchmarks up to the next level. And that's so wonderful, because it's hard for the classroom teacher to find time, that time, every period. So to have that differentiated in that way is very exciting. I also loved your slides about the cohort model, because so often when we look at MCAS data, we just compare, you know, 4th grade to 4th grade to 4th grade. And now with the new reporting, it's possible to look at the cohort model and what it's showing for the Tucker School is all good news. So, great work. Thank you.
Congratulations. Amazing results. I think I have two questions. One, the Title I homework, is that in school or is that after school?
After school.
It's after school. So how many different programs do you have before or after school?
Before school, we have morning math Tuesdays and Thursdays. And after school, we have Homework Club. And then we also have enrichment clubs through a PAST program. You did debate. We have a science club. We have drama. We have an arts and crafts club as well. And then we offer a sports club at different times.
That's great. And basically, all the, is that self-funded or funded with outside resources? Title I, you've mentioned.
Title I funds the morning math program and the Homework Club. Those are free, students are invited. Students actually beg to come to the Homework Club. They ask me every day, "Can I get in? Can I get in?" The PAST program is self-funded. We fund it so that we can offer a couple scholarships each time around. Our goal was to, in terms of, like we talked about, how do we close that science gap, to be able to provide opportunities for students who might not typically have them.
So my one final question is sort of a wish list. If there was one thing that you could do that would close some of the gaps that you see, what would that be? What, funding aside, but what, is it more time on task? Is it, what, into what direction do you think?
I think, I think the direction that, you know, we continue to work in, and my diversity committee really is continuing, a lot of this work is connecting more with the families. A lot of our families are working many jobs. They're working around the clock. But our diversity committee kind of has taken on the task of how can we support families so they can support their children? And it's really creating those links with those families. This year, one of the things that we did was to take some of the students who were in the warning category on the MCAS, or didn't do as well on the MCAS, bring them in, the child and the parents, sit down with them, share the scores with them, share what the breakdown is. And I copied the test, and I had the child read the question out loud and be able, and I said, "So what's the answer?" And they could tell me. I said, "But you circled D, and you knew it was A. Why?" And to really kind of prove to them that you know the answer. So this is about slowing down. So this is about slowing down. It's about focusing and helping them understand their strengths and where they can focus and make themselves stronger. So if I had the power to help families be more connected with the school, if they had the time to do that, if we had the resources to do that, that's what I would put the resources in.
Sorry, just one final question. RTI is happening only in math or is it math and ELA?
Math and ELA.
And ELA. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Walker.
What else can we do, what else can we do to support what you're doing?
I think that, I'll say it, and then I think I would like you...
Here's a little preface. When someone who has some ability to allocate resources asks you what else they can do, don't say you're fine.
One of the things we are doing this summer is we're moving the Title I Summer Scholars Program back to Tucker. And we are doing that because we believe that our attendance will be better. The children can walk to Tucker. And it's, in the summer, it's too long a walk to go to Pierce. Our attendance was spotty. It was too long to go to the high school. So one of the things that would really support our students, again, goes back to that whole idea of cultural stock. We're going to be able to provide the reading and the math to the students in the summer. I would love to be able to provide more enrichment opportunities to the students, to bring more science into the summer program, to bring more art opportunities into the program, to level the playing field in a way so that all of our students have those enrichment opportunities that other children have, so that when they're reading about amphibians and they're reading about rocks and minerals and those kind of things, they've already had the experience to actually touch them and manipulate them. So that would be a wonderful opportunity for our students.
So is that staff, materials? What is it?
It's staff and programming. We could link up with the Museum of Science. We could link up with the aquarium and bring in these special, these special guests and these special programs to enrich the students.
So will you give Mr. Phelan and the superintendent a proposal?
Mm-hmm. That would be wonderful.
Thanks.
And does my site council see anything else?
I think, so I'm the parent of a fourth grader and a first grader. We were very fortunate to have the best third-grade teacher in the district last year, who's sitting next to me. And it was our first year in Milton. And I think that the differentiation that Mr. Osh was able to give to all the students is really, really important. And I think that is the kind of support that makes the school great for every family, no matter what level they find their scholar at. And I think that, you know, being able to continue to support those. And I know, I know Marcia's done an incredible scheduling, you know, sleight of hand in order to make that happen. And when we heard that that was continuing this year, it was really, really great. And we sort of get our little bit of information from our students about, you know, "Oh, I have a reading group. Okay. Who's in it?" And then you figure out, somebody went to a lot of time and effort to get that group of seven or eight kids together in front of a teacher and reading a text that's, you know, that's at their level. And I think that doing that for reading and math has been really, really great for our family. And I know it's been helpful for other people. So being able to figure out how to continue to support that, I think is incredibly important.
Can I say one thing before you thank them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is going to, well, there's no silly question, right? No question too silly. RTI, can it be done in French? I just don't know enough about it.
In first...
In the French classes in first grade?
It can be done, but in, and we offer support through Kate Lavelle, who's our reading specialist. But in first grade and second grade, it's 100% in French.
Right.
So we can't mix the kids with the other students.
But you can't then do it in the French immersion classroom?
We do. We do small groups.
Oh, oh, oh.
But I only have one strand.
Within the classroom. Got it.
Yeah, within the classroom.
Got it.
With the other groups, we're mixing between classrooms.
Okay. And then the STEM program for grade, when we have it up and running, isn't that something that you would think would help with science?
Absolutely. It's fantastic.
And you think we should add an A to it for art?
Pardon me?
We should add an A, S-T-A-M?
I am totally in favor of that as a mother of an artist, so. But it has been a wonderful addition to our program, that hands-on manipulation and the level of vocabulary that the kids are talking while they're doing it. And they're talking about levers and gears and balls and ramps and speed and fulcrums. And out of the mouths of these little babes, it's amazing.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Phelan?
Well, I would like to thank Marcia and her group for coming forward. And I want to acknowledge Marcia Yuretsky as someone who has led the Tucker School over the last five years to two-state accommodations, to incredible, high student growth in each year. That was demonstrated through the data that she showed tonight and has showed over the years, for elevating the expectation of every single teacher and every single student in the building on a daily basis that provides the motivation and the hard work that has produced the student outcomes that we see that are very, very impressive, not only in all of our students, but also in our students who have historically needed to make progress and then progress plus to shrink that gap, which has been evidenced through her data tonight. But more importantly than all of that is that she has continued to be able to lead and create a unique culture at the Tucker, where families walk to school, where families feel connected to school, where people are very, very happy and always want to make sure that they can come in and support their school. So I want to thank Marcia very publicly and for all the hard work and all the great work that has been done over her time at the Tucker School. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, and thank everybody here for your support. I have a great team behind me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marcia.
Glenn, can I just make an announcement?
Sure.
Forty-two to 27 at the third quarter. Boys' basketball.
We're winning 42-37?
Forty-two, 27.
That means there's going to be another game.
Yes. I just had to say.
Good. Kristen, where do they play next, do you know?
UMass Boston. Wore my red.
All right, Mr. Phelan. You're doing double duty here, running the equipment and...
One on people hanging tonight for this.
We can help. Just ask.
I would like to let everybody know that we are proceeding and making progress in the screening committees that we have in place for our Assistant Superintendent for Business and our search for a Tucker Elementary School principal. We do have members on both committees. We have been able to entice member Padera to be on both groups. But if anybody would like to be on either one of those groups at this table, they could please let us know. You have the timelines and the dates that the committees will be meeting. And we look forward to giving updates on how these search committees will be moving forward. There was a change in two of the Tucker Elementary School dates as they did have conflicts with the MCAS examination. So we did update that timeline and provided those changes so everybody could be aware. So I'd like to thank all involved in that. The happenings...
Just, I was wondering what the response is. The advertisements have already been placed, is that correct?
Correct.
So have you...
We have not. I believe the timelines are almost exhausted for both positions. I have not gone on school spring and have seen it as of late. Last week, when I did dipstick the positions in school spring, I believe we had about 15 for the Tucker Principalship and about 15 or so for the Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you.
In our happenings today...
We have the calendar as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. In your package, you have the 2013, 2014 school calendar that shows our teachers coming back on August 26th, which is a Monday, and 27th for their professional development. The first day of school for students would be Tuesday, excuse me, would be Wednesday, August 28th. As we have done traditionally for the last several years, students start prior to Labor Day for the Wednesday and Thursday in August, have the Friday before Labor Day off, and have Labor Day Monday off, and then begin September on Tuesday, the 3rd. There is a significant break in the middle in December for our winter recess that we have positioned the days off around the holidays. But the calendar looks very consistent with, which it has in the last few years. Are there any questions about the calendar for the 2013-14 school year?
Ms. Kelly.
Are we being asked to vote on it tonight?
Yeah, it's in the...
Yes.
So I was wondering whether we were going to put the high school half-days in, or is that a decision that has not been made yet?
Well, that would be good.
That is not a decision that has been made yet for a variety of reasons.
Okay. So if necessary, we could amend it at a later date?
Correct.
And can I ask a question about it? The conferences, we're still at one conference per year?
Mm-hmm. Right, yes.
Just want to voice my displeasure with that again.
Sharon?
I was going to comment on that, too. So we have the conferences the week before Thanksgiving, and then, again, we have Thanksgiving Day off. So just, you know, articulating that for people who are sitting at home and aren't looking at it. And also that the students get to ease their way in with two days the first week, three days the second because of both Rosh Hashanah and Labor Day, and then start a full week, so.
Mm-hmm. Great. So I would entertain a motion to approve the 2013-2014 school year calendar.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Padera. Any other comments, questions? Seeing done, I'll call for a vote. All votes in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. On to the happenings, Mr. Phelan.
Thank you. The happenings in the Milton Public Schools, I will read briefly a quick update on the calendar for this month. We have March, March is the National Youth Art Month and National Music in Our Schools Month. There's a complete list of all those activities in your green folder and is posted on the web. On March 7th, which is tomorrow, we have Fifth Grade Step-Up Day. All of our fifth graders will be going to the Pierce Middle School for a tour and to meet their teachers and Dr. Spalding, the Pierce Principal. March 9th, as you know, we have our Celebration for Education at the Marriott and Quincy. That is a sold-out event. We're very excited, and we have a lot of staff that will be presenting and interacting with the crowd with the new technology that we have been able to secure largely through grants and through our foundation. Pierce Middle School, Grade Five Information Night will be on March 12th. Dr. Spalding will hold that night for all fifth-grade parents. We encourage all to go and see what their course of studies will look like at the middle school when their children go into sixth grade. March 13th is the rescheduled Walk-a-Thon. We are holding it after school in order to get the event in before we have those students lose momentum. And working in the high school, we hear Yolanda Beach encouraging students daily. And I think that we're going to have a great turnout as we do every year. So we're looking very much forward to that. That's a Wednesday. March 20th, we have College Planning Night at Milton High School. Ken Arbert, the Director of Guidance, along with James Jett and his staff, will be providing folks with support around their college planning. This is for sophomores, juniors, and seniors if necessary. But this is a very important night, especially for our junior class members. And March 21 and 22 is the Milton High School Faculty Talent Show. That is a Thursday and Friday night. That is a lot of fun. When Charlene Roach and I came up to set up a school committee tonight, we caught about seven or eight high school staff videotaping their talent and getting ready for the talent show. So I can't give away who that was and what that act may look like, but it was very, very, very interesting, and it will be a lot of fun to watch. As you know, we have a lot of exciting things going on in winter sports. Boys' basketball is playing tonight at Brockton against Wellesley. This is the semifinals of the self-sectional point in the tournament. If the boys win tonight, they go on Saturday night, Saturday afternoon at 4:00 at UMass Boston. So they're one game away from the Garden, which is very exciting. We had a great season for our girls' basketball, who went seven and 11. They had a great year. Boys' ice hockey had a great year, went to the tournament and lost in their first game. And our girls' ice hockey team went to the tournament, however, losing in their first game. Boys' and girls' indoor track went to the state tournament. They did well as a team, and they had individual runners do very well in the state meets at the Reggie Lewis, one of whom was actually racing while our basketball team was playing right next door at the Reggie Lewis last Saturday night. Very exciting. Our wrestling team did exceptionally well, continues to grow in number and grow in talent. The wrestling team did extremely well in the Bay State League, went to the tournament, and again had several individual wrestlers move forward in the state tournament, doing extremely well. And our boys' and girls' ski team, similar results. The team did well, and individuals moved on to state tournaments. So out of our one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight sports this year, seven of those sports produced postseason performances by teams and by individuals. So we're very, very happy for our sports update and to be able to provide those opportunities to our student athletes. The last piece of our happenings is that we were able to collect all of our responses for grade one. And on Friday of March 1st, parents were asked to submit their program selections. On Tuesday, March 5th, we took all that and we did our computer randomized lottery by school. We sent out a letter to all grade one, future grade one parents, our kindergarten parents, letting them know by school what the numbers were, to be very transparent about what the breakdown was by school. That was followed up by an individual email to each student and family today that stated what their program selection result was. We were fortunate to say out loud, and in your green folder are the results of the breakdown of choice in how students are currently placed. At this point in time, we have 12 families across the entire district. We have 312 who requested a program and got their program in their school. And we have 12 who have been placed in the English Innovation Path and who will be waiting to see if there is any movement via their lottery number for space to be available later as the process moves forward. I encourage parents and encourage the community to know that this will be about a three-phase process. As we do the program selection with the students that we have right now in kindergarten, the next phase, we'll see how that's impacted by our students who enter school between April 1 and June 30th, and how that is impacted by our students who went to first grade in the summer months, all of which will potentially provide opportunity for students and families of those 12 to move into the choice, the program of their choice. So we do ask for patience, and we are very, very happy that the success rate is at such a very high level. 312 getting the program of choice in the school of their homeschool. And we are asking the patients of and provide a document and some literature to those 12 families, letting them know what the process is and how we will be moving forward.
You have questions?
I just wanted to add something, John, or ask you about this. The teams that you mentioned, all of which have done really well, I think it's fair to say that the money from the Walk-a-Thon and the banners surely helped those teams in this past year, as will the money raised this year help our teams next year as part of the larger budget.
Mm-hmm.
And just remind people, it's not too late to give pledges. We need kids to show up on Wednesday with their money. And if you don't have a kid who's asked you, then we'll take a check made out to Milton High School. It's tax deductible. So, anyway, I just, I just want to point out, there is such a connection.
Thank you. Did you want to show your T-shirt?
I already did. My red. I had to wear it today for luck.
Ms. Kelly, you...
I just wanted to go back to the grade one. So if I understand this sheet, the class sizes are, so as it stands now, are in the, I guess, orange section? Is that correct?
Correct. So the sheet that you're looking at has three blocks, one that's green, one that's blue, and one that is tan. And the top group shows what the choices were.
It seems like you take the orange.
By school and by program. The second block, which is blue, is the details in terms of what seats were made available and how we had to, the process by which we went to balance our programming as we approached what school needed a lottery. And the last section was the actual placement of students. And I want to remind folks that the process is to make sure that our English numbers are healthy before we then determine how many will be, how many slots will be available in the French immersion program. So that process that we outlined via our presentation... So that process that we outlined via our presentation, and that has been set in policy, was utilized to achieve these results.
So if I'm reading this correctly, there's one co-taught class?
Correct.
And that's housed at Glover?
That's correct.
That's right. And the sped reference in Cunningham and Collicott, are those different programs, or are those?
Those are students that would be in either neck leap.
Got it.
That are included in Grade 1 numbers.
And are any of the French immersion classes basically capped at this point?
The, if you note, that if you see the French numbers in each school to your right in the TN box, which is the third box at the bottom, those numbers will stay pat until if any new students come to the district that we then can put into English that would relieve us, would allow us to go back and say to someone who was on a waitlist, now that we have better numbers in English, we are able to provide you a spot in French. So for example, if there were a change in someone in French immersion at the Tucker, as an example, that person wanted to go back to English, after we have a period of time to assess that, that person would go back to English, making that one of those English classes a 19. We would then be able to go back to one of the folks that are on the list at Tucker for French and take the first person in line and ask them if they wanted that next seat.
Right, and I guess that's where I'm questioning. So Tucker has 25 right now.
Uh huh.
You're saying that that, is that the cap for Tucker's French?
For right now, if all remain the same, that is the cap right now.
Right. And are you establishing a cap for Cunningham and Collicott as well? I guess that's where I'm a little confused.
This is only a cap with the amount of students that we have presently. These numbers will move as more students enroll in the Milton Public Schools and we balance our class size. So for example, if we need to have students enroll in Glover, and we can add more students to our Glover English classes, and we still have Glover parents waiting to be in French who are already assigned to that 18 Glover 1st grade, then we will ask that parent and say, we have more students enrolling in Glover School, they will be in English. We have three or four people waiting at Glover to be in the French. We will take them in order and place them into the classrooms if there is available spots. We will never go higher than 26. So if at Glover that meant that they could access a district-wide lottery, then we would do so. So we will take each building individually. We will let time pass in the first phase, and we want to make sure that all of our current parents know that no new students to the district will be placed in a program before someone's program choice of a parent who's already in the district has been exhausted, their opportunity has been exhausted.
Thank you.
Chair.
So I think I'm following. You, the English numbers are set as well. So in order for someone on the waitlist to move into French, they also need someone to go into English to fill that spot that they're vacating, correct? Okay. So, and I know you can't see the future, but with the numbers we have and the trends you've seen in the past, what are the likelihood of those students coming off the waitlist? We have 12.
We, I believe that there will be movement, and the history tells us that there will be movement as people move out of the district or change their mind after this process has taken place. So I do believe that there will be movement, probably at each one of the elementary schools would be my, if I could see the future, I believe that there will be movement within this group of folks.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, another question then. So if people come into the district, are they going to be put, placed depending on where they live, or depending on where there is the most needed space?
It will be, we'll ask them what they would like for program.
Okay.
We will ask what district they're from.
Right.
We will place them on hold.
Okay.
We will look at all the numbers after a period of time has gone by. Probably at the end of June will be the first session where we will reassign folks.
Okay.
And we'll reassign everybody that's with us up to June 30th, which is what we have traditionally do in the past anyways.
Okay.
We will do the same thing from July to August. We'll let a pile of students who enroll determine what district they are originally from and what program they would like, and then we would assign them to the best class size in the district that we have, all of which will be done through the lens of ensuring balance between programs.
Okay. And then one last question. So these parents on the waitlist, are they gonna hear as time, as things happen, or at certain periods of time?
Certain periods of time. They, the 12 families who we notified today received a longer letter or a longer email, and all these parents will receive these letters in US mail as well. And kind of outlined in a Q&amp;A format that here's some different information that you might need to know, and if you can be patient with us. So the example would be, the headings on ours was, your assignment has been the English Innovation Pathway. You did enter the French lottery. Here is your number.
Okay.
The next one was, what does this mean for me? So we provided some text. What are my chances of changing my status and getting off the waitlist? What should I do next? What about seats in other schools? And what about students new to the district? So we answered all those questions for parents of those 12 folks.
Okay, so we laid that out for them.
So they have some information. Some folks did call today, and we gave them that information, and so we will be periodically updating them, but we won't do anything individual by individual. We'll wait for time to pass, see what the aggregate look of the district looks like, and then we will communicate with folks who have the ability to come off the list by school and then by district.
Okay. Thanks.
Questions? Mr. Walker.
It's not a question that I, I understand that we all want to understand exactly what's going on here, but this is a good example of discussion which has great value for us who have the piece of paper in front of us, but no value for the people watching at home or even in the audience. So at least, the very least, I'd like to request that we get this up on the website tomorrow morning, because I don't think anybody at home could have followed the discussion we just had for 15 minutes.
Any other comments? Fallon, anything else from the report?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly.
Just, I think the superintendent mentioned that the communication around the STEM program has contributed to some of the balance that we see coming back, and I think that's kudos to the administration for all the work you've done on that, and the whole communication piece, which sounded like it was a huge success. So, thank you.
To Mr. Walker's point, this sheet will be made available on the web for everybody to review. The numbers by school were given to parents in their letters that they received yesterday, so this aggregate view will be given out on the web as well. And we're very happy to announce that there were no lotteries at the Cunningham nor the Collicott, and that we feel that the STEM program has contributed to a balanced view of 1st grade programming, and the results were exciting for the district. So we appreciate all the work that Marilyn Decker in the 1st grade did to do a great job with STEM this year.
And just to say that what's on the sheets, the number that I think people look at is approximately 57% of incoming 1st grade, 1st graders have French chosen for them by their parents. That's down from about 65% last year, 66%. So it is a significant decrease, and certainly STEM has more than little to do with that. Anything else from Mr. Fallon? Just very briefly, under my report, last weekend, the superintendent asked me to put together a quick little budget update for her blog, which I did, and went out over the weekend just to fill people in who aren't on the mailing list. Over the last couple of weeks, we, of course, have met with the warrant committee. As people who have watched this will know, we asked for a budget this year, which was a combination of $500,000 in advancements mainly around science and reading, and we talked about that quite to some extent, and the, and plus another $2.4 million basically to move the system forward and deal with some of the special education and other issues that we have coming up this year. We had prepared, the warrant committee had asked us to prepare a picture of what the system would look like if we only got $1.5 million instead of the $2.9, which we did in the two-level presentation that we've done a couple of times now on, at our meetings. And at this last couple of meetings of the warrant committee, the warrant committee has, their initial recommendation is that we get just about $2 million, $1.98 million above-level dollar funding, which basically allows us to take the Level 2, the second level of cuts, off the table. We still are faced with a shortfall from our request of roughly $900,000, so we are still dealing with some cuts in our budget. We're still dealing with that first half of the presentation that people have seen or that is on the web. And that is where we stand today. There will be movement in this prior to town meeting, as there always is. The warrant committee used a, you know, conservative estimate of state aid, for instance, of level-dollar funding. We think that it will be somewhat above that, though probably not as generous as the governor's budget might give us, but somewhere in there, there's some more money to be allocated. And things do shake out between now and the first Monday in May when town meeting comes in. So there will be some movement in this, but we are looking at some, not getting our full request funded and the consequences of doing that. So we will be talking about that, I'm sure, as we go forward. The other issue.
Chair, one question on that. So from a timeline standpoint, when do you think we need to finish the difficult discussion we started about what cuts to actually make? As you recall, we never actually voted the final list on cuts.
I think we need to be working on that now, because I think frankly, the, any movement at this point is not going to be enormous.
I think that's right.
I think if we're looking at, you know, $900,000 in reductions now, which is roughly our Level 1 plus about $30,000 more on our spreadsheet, we need to be looking at that. I think there'll be some movement in that. I don't think it'll be hugely significant within that, you know, maybe 10, 15% at most, I think is probably where we'll be looking in there. So we have a significant deficit from our request, and I, we should look at exactly how that plays out. The warrant committee has actually asked us to break down for one of the tables at the back of the warrant, exactly where those cuts are gonna come in the very, in our seven line items.
Right.
That's gonna take a little work.
And it seems to me we would need to take the final vote on cuts before we complete Table 9.
Yes. I've given them a version of Table 9 that has salary and non-salary in their presentation, because we can, you know, do that roughly from where we, where we left it, but it's certainly, we're not at the point where we can break it out across our line items now, because some of those cuts, as you recall, were increases in fees, and we had to figure out where they're gonna be allocated, and there's all sorts of trickiness in there as to figure out which line, which line items go where. You know, when we say a teacher here is being cut, we know what line that's in, because all the teachers are in the instructional salary line, but to the extent that some of the other things need some fleshing out, we're gonna have to do that. We should be looking at doing that probably in the very short run, because they're looking at heading to press shortly. So I've given them sort of a fill-in for that table. So probably that's something the, you know, finance subcommittee can take a run at in their next meeting, just to give us a, something that we can bring to the next school committee meeting possibly shortly.
Can I just ask a question about the timing? So that, from here, it would go back to the finance subcommittee Monday morning?
Tuesday morning.
Oh, Tuesday morning, sorry. And then come back to us with suggestions that we are gonna vote on?
We need to make a final, I mean, assuming that we have a $900,000 difference between what we've asked for and what we're likely to receive, we have to approve what that, what the difference would be made up of. Basically, we have to prove where we would allocate the $2 million they gave us, is actually the more appropriate way to say it. And so we have to have a budget that, you know, we will have going forward. We can, we will then amend it later on as if, you know, as things change, but I think at this point, we really have to have a notion of what our budget is, so that when the warrant goes to press, it will have some sort of reference to what we're looking at. Ms. Kelly?
Table, can you give me a little bit more definition on Table 9?
Table 9 is the table at the back of the warrants that looks at our seven major categories of, and breaks each out by salary and expenses. And the way it's broken out is it's a couple of years of actuals, this year's budget, our request for next year, and then they, a column for their recommendation. Now, their recommendation is only a number, and so it's really just a bottom-line number. What they would like us to do is to try to extend that recommendation up the table across actually the 14 lines of it.
Right, and I guess that's why I missed the question, because I don't think we've ever done that before? I could be wrong.
Apparently it was like that in last year's warrant or two years ago's warrant, the one I had, actually had that, so.
I don't know if the school committee participated in that. It may have been, I'm not sure where it came from.
I'm not sure either.
And I guess the reason I'm asking is whether I think maybe we should, I mean, does any other department have that same request? Do they have their own separate budget in a Table 9 or Table whatever that they're being asked to?
But they're voted on line items, so they have to do it. I mean, if there's a, if their request has been changed, the warrant committee said, well, you're gonna, you're gonna lose $10,000 in salary. They specify basically what line items it gets cut in, although they usually ask the departments, how would you like to take that? But where the school committee has bottom-line authority, the article only shows a bottom-line for us, and the table in the back of the warrant has historically shown a breakout of how that, of how that's allocated across the various lines. Of course, again, it's informational in the sense that at any point, the school committee can change that, because having bottom-line authority, and we have, at any point during the year, we can transfer money between those lines, unlike any other department.
Which I guess is why I'm asking the question. I have no problem with having what our request was and how that breaks out, because we voted that top-line budget. When it comes to breaking it out into categories, I'm not so sure that that's something that we need to do at this point, I guess would be my perspective.
To which I would respond, why wouldn't we? We have to, at some point, decide on what the budget is.
Right, and I would say there's a couple steps that we will go through.
And we have to decide on what the cuts are, so why wouldn't we?
Because there's a couple steps that we will go through as a committee before we get to a final allocation of resources for next year's budget. That's why.
Which?
We can talk about that later.
Which would be completed once we decide what the cuts are.
No, not necessarily.
Oh?
Which we can talk about at a later point in this meeting.
I, I hear something coming up from the finance subcommittee, so.
Yes.
No, I think it's an executive session.
Yeah.
In any case, that's where we stand on that. I also want to just mention, people were asking about this, the notion of sequestration.
Before you go to that, I just have, they, oh, they won.
Yay!
They won. You have Boston.
What was the score?
Here we come. They didn't, didn't say what the score was.
All right.
Sorry, but they won.
Good job keeping us informed.
Yes, thank you to my secret time. But actually, my, I also wanted to ask, so the timeline, that's what I'm trying to get at, because I'm sure we're all getting emails about what's cut, what's not cut. So we had list one, or what was it called? Level 1 and Level 2. So have those remained fluid? Are they what they were? Are those gonna be looked at? Like, where are we at with this process so we can tell people?
We haven't voted them.
I know.
And we need to have the difficult discussion about what they, what the final ones are.
Right.
Because there's some things on there that I think need to come off the table.
And I have lost sense myself of what Level 1 was and Level 2 was, so people are asking, and, so I just want to know a timeline for me as to when I can expect to really get this information before we vote on it, so I can vote intelligently.
Well, the current version, I think, is on the website, but.
And that's what I'm asking, are we still using that?
Well, that's the starting, that's the starting point.
That's what I just want to be clear on. Okay, so we can refer people to that.
But to try to answer your question, I think we have to finalize this at our next meeting.
Right, we do.
There is basically enough money to fund all of the Level 2, but we have to choose whether that is in fact what we want to do with it and how we want to allocate any money we have across those various.
Thank you, that helps.
Couple people have been asking about the sequestration that's upcoming. It's a, just a.
The federal sequestration?
Yes. It has some effect on us in that some of our money is, the Department of Education money that comes from the federal government. Education funds won't be cut until July, but we heard from the Tucker folks tonight about, you know, their Title 1 programs. Title 1 is federal money and would be affected by this. The sequestration itself is 2% across the board, but it's like anything else, that sounds like it's not so bad, but in fact, it's not a 2% across the board, because it's like saying, you know, the. But in fact, it's not a 2% across the board because it's like saying, you know, the best analogy I've heard is if someone said they want to save 2% on their household income, that doesn't mean they sent in 2% less of their mortgage. There are certain things you have to pay. And so the estimate is that a 2% cut across the board to various, let's take the non-defense side of it, would actually affect more between a 5% and 6% cut in those fund programs that can actually be cut. So National School Boards Association and others are saying that education, in budgeting for next year, education-related federal money, we should be looking at between a 5% and a 6% cut in our funding. Now, that's our special ed grant and our Title One grant, which for us are in the order of a million and a half dollars a year. So 6% on that is $90,000 of, you know, direct grants that are potentially, we would lose. Also, as a Medicaid provider, our Medicaid reimbursement would be affected by about 2% because that's a different bucket coming out of there. That could cost us another $25,000 or so next year. So the sequestration, if it holds, has the effect, has the potential effect of roughly in the neighborhood of $100,000 of our other funding, our non-town meeting funding, in addition to whatever it would do to the state that might affect other sources of funds that we get. So it is out there. It's not going to, whatever affects us, won't affect us in fiscal '13 in the current year, but we have to look forward to fiscal '14. It might have some effects on us at that point. Ms. Kelly?
So it definitely won't affect this year even though there, essentially, the July cut?
July 1. The education cuts won't take effect until July 1.
But federal money, doesn't that go up September or August? It's on a different timeline than our fiscal budget.
Some grants, well, the federal budget's October to October.
Right. And that's why I'm asking the question, so.
But if they hit it July 1, it will impact our fiscal '14 budget. It may be the end of the federal government's fiscal '14 budget, but it's our fiscal '14.
Right. So if in Title One, we were allocated, say, $100,000, right? And they say on July 1, $100,000, it goes through to September 1 in the federal calendar? If they were to say they were cutting whatever, $10,000 out of that, would it impact this year's programming? That's my question. Or is Title One sort of always looking ahead? So in other words, the summer program that you mentioned, is that really utilizing last year's funding or is it this year's funding? You know, the coming year's funding?
The school year funding that we're in right now, in Title One, is the summer program for Summer '13 is being funded by this year's Title One grant.
So then-
The Title One funding does go through August. It needs to be spent by the end of August, to your point.
Right.
We do not have any indication right now that that roughly $110,000 or so thousand is being, is in jeopardy at this time. So we haven't been informed. Marsha Reski is our Title One grant contact person. She has a pool of funds that have already identified. I'm not sure if they've been deposited yet, to your point, and we can find that out for you.
That's my, I guess, my concern for this year's programming. So, and I'm not sure, not having an assistant superintendent for business at this particular point in time, except someone who works part-time, whether we could look on the outside of all the potential impacts. We could create a document. I'd love for this to be shared with the warrant committee so that they understand potential issues that we may be facing, not only this year, but next year. And preface it, you know, such that it's an outside chance, but here are the potential impacts in terms of dollars for us both this year and next year.
Okay.
The only other item I had was just to report that at last night's school building committee meeting, they appropriated $86,000 and change for the card swipe readers for the schools to grant access to the schools. And with that, and once their last payment of owner insurance is made, probably this summer-ish, we're owed about $120,000 from the insurance company, probably at the end of the summer. That would possibly put us out of existence. It's a school building committee that's been going on for, seemingly forever, might be seeing the end of its time as a school building committee. So that was approved last night, so that's a-
That's great.
Good piece of news. So with that, I'll move on to the Finance Subcommittee report. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you. I think I'd like to ask Mr. Phelan to sort of set up the, both the security position and the security fee, if you might.
Sure. I'd like to take it in order of, in your packet, you have an updated fee schedule that I believe was voted initially, and we have added a section to it in response to some of our safety initiatives in the Milton public schools and in conjunction with the Milton Police and with the work of Member Walker and Bill Ritchie. We have asked to amend and reapprove the fee schedule for this current school year to include a 10-year security fee.
$10.
Excuse me, a $10 security fee for programs that operate within Milton High School between the hours of 3:00 PM and 10:00 PM. Specifically for this year, those programs would be Milton Adult Education, the Applied Music Lessons, the Milton High School SAT Prep Program, which is run as an adjunct program through adult education, and the Drivers Ed Program, which is also run through the Milton Adult Education Program. This fee that we are assessing for the January through June time period, because there's an enrollment and registration process that's happening right now, actually, Sean Walsh is downstairs doing the registration as we speak. The funds that we secure through this security fee will go towards the expenses that we incur when we post and look to hire the position of the security person that will sit at Milton High School from 3:00 to 10:00 for the remainder of the school year, starting mid-March through the end of the school year, Monday through Friday.
Ms. Kelly?
So can we just give a little explanation as to why we believe this is necessary at this point in time?
Sure. We have reevaluated our security at all the schools, and this has taken a lot of different approaches. To Chairman Pavlicek's comments earlier, we are looking to get funding, and Mr. Walker has been working with Chief Wells and Jack Richmond, Sergeant Richmond and Bill Ritchie to what they call hardening some of the areas of the school security at each building. Card readers will be put in place at schools with some support of the Building Committee money and the warrant through the Capitol Committee. We are looking to tighten the security at the high school from 3:00 to 10:00 because we have a lot of folks that come in and out of the high school during those hours. And we need to, from a safety perspective, treat the school as if it's in operation for all students like it is during the day. We have good protocols and safe protocols in place during the school day, and we want to begin to tighten those protocols up in the hours from 3:00 to 10:00 at the high school. There are a lot of different moving parts to the different pieces of safety protocols that we're reviewing and taking action on during the school day and at night, especially at the high school, all of which I think will be summarized as we begin to, as we summarize some of the meetings that we've had. We have had three substantial meetings with the police chief, members of the school committee. We actually went into executive session to some degree to talk about some of these strategies. And we are combining several different efforts, and we will summarize those to the school committee at a later date when it's appropriate to do so. But all of this is being put in place to provide a safe environment during the school day, and in this case of this fee at the high school from 3:00 to 10:00 PM.
Do you have an estimate of how much money this is going to?
We do. I believe that, given the enrollment that we historically have in all four of those programs, that we should generate about $6,000 through this $10 fee for this half of the year. If we start the security position in mid-March at a pay rate, and I'm looking at this jumping to the next item on the agenda, which is the memo from Mary Gormley to the school committee, if we institute a position that costs $15 an hour, seven hours a day, that comes to about $525 a week. Given there are 10 weeks of school in place from mid-March to the middle of June, that will be about a $5,250 expenditure. So the $6,000 we anticipate through this fee would cover that expense.
Ms. Kelly?
And then just going forward, so the programs you outlined would be charged, the $10 fee for this portion or this session, but it will be charged by session. So for instance, the music lessons, which have a fall, a sort of a fall-
Registration in a winter-
In a winter registration, a $10 fee would be charged to each of those sessions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions on this? Ms. Eglies?
Not a question, but I just, Mar, I just want to make sure that I'm on record. I still feel the change in the athletic fee to 300. I know there's nothing else we can do, but I look at some of these other things and not great choices. Transportation goes up, but I do have some ability to drive my kid. I can't have ability to put my kid in high school athletic programs without going for the high school. So just want to state it again that I think 300 a sport is too high, but I understand we have no other choice. That's it. Not a question, just a comment.
So I would, oh, go ahead. I was going to entertain a motion to accept this change in our fee schedule by adding $10 to previously mentioned fees for the remainder of the year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous. And then we would entertain a motion to create this security position.
In your possession is a outline of the security fee and description of the security guide position that we would like to put in place at Milton High School for the remainder of this fiscal year. We, again, would like to have the position in place by mid-March. We will post it when it's approved. We look to pay this position $15 an hour. It'll be a temporary position for this year only as we figure out its value and how we want to organize this work, but we wanted to put the position in place for this fiscal year. So we are asking for a vote for someone to be at the desk. We're working in conjunction with the Milton Police to find someone who might be suitable for this position. But we'll have someone in place from 3:00 to 10:00 at the high school, Monday through Friday, for the remainder of the school year, hopefully starting mid-March.
So moved with the understanding that we need a little further discussion on what the qualifications of that individual would be.
A second?
Second.
So moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Kelly to add this position. Ms. Kelly?
And just the establishment of what those times and days would be, I think when we had talked about at the Finance Subcommittee, we didn't know whether the Friday was definitely necessary at this point because I thought you were maybe going to switch some lessons around or something. I'm not sure how.
So for the remainder of the school year, because we do have already families and activities scheduled for Friday, we are going to provide that support on Fridays as well. As we look into the next school year, we will attempt to contain the activities at night to maybe four nights a week in hopes to reduce the cost of the position.
Ms. Sheridan?
I would just like to say that I think that the majority of the people watching this or listening to this discussion have no idea how many people walk through that front door every night at Milton High School. And I feel strongly that this is an important step to take, and it's definitely needed for the safety of all people in the school at night.
Right. And I would add to that, that the, that population is, in many cases, younger children than are there during the day.
Ms. Kelly?
And I would also add that in years past, we did have that position.
That's right.
And over the years of cutting, basically, we lost it. So this is an effort to put that very needed position back in place.
Ms. Eglies?
So it's going to be at the front office, main office, but then what about all the kids going in and out of the back door? The football team, you know, like how do they get in and out? They're not going to go in through the front door in their cleats.
So we talked a lot about what that would look like, and we met with the police chief and Sergeant Richmond, and their philosophy and guidance as the experts in the area talked about not needing to hit a home run, but you need to create base hits. You need to harden the security measures as best you can at different junctions, at different parts of the building, and at different parts of the day. We are working with the principal of the high school, James Jett, and Steve Tracy, the athletic director, about protocols for the back of the building. But we are taking this measure because we know it will enhance security in the front of the building.
I mean, obviously, if there is a track meet or something in the field house on a particular night, that's a different kind of an issue than-
That's right.
-typical Wednesday night when there's, you know, music lessons and there are these different things. So, I mean, there are special cases, town meeting, for instance, that are going to have to be handled separately, but what we're looking for is a base protocol.
And once we have the card access system in place, we'll have the ability to secure different parts of the building in different ways. But it won't be until we have that system that we can do that.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to approve this position. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And continuing?
And then the last matter to take up is the summer enrichment program. Where for fees, when we voted the last batch of fee increases, we actually voted both the regular summer school-length program and then an alternative, which would be a four-day program. And if, Mr. Phelan, if you'd like to just explain why the administration is recommending to move to the four-day program.
Sure. We, we had feedback over several years that, and data through several years, that we weren't getting the same amount of attendance on Fridays in our summer program. We sent out a survey to our summer school parents that had participated last year and asked them if there were to be a change in the amount of days that we had summer school from a five-day-a-week, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM program to a four-day-a-week, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM program. How many of them would still attend the program? Of the 124 overall participants in the survey, we received 89% of the folks that said that they would still attend, and they supported that switch. So in an attempt to, from a fee schedule perspective, we prorated the cost of the program and basically reduced it by one-fifth or 20% because that represented the one day. So we hope to run the program for the same length of time in terms of weeks, five weeks, but only have it four days a week for each of those five weeks. So we are recommending, given the results, that we seek approval from the school committee to run our Milton summer enrichment program for the five weeks, but only for four days a week during that time.
So moved.
Approved by Ms. Sheridan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Walker. Any discussion? Ms. Kelly?
I can't remember. I apologize. Does this impact the special education summer program? Are they on the same timetable or?
The special education program is differentiated in how long, how much time they have during the summer. We are in conversation with our NECC program that goes longer and asking them what are the pros and cons. But right now, this will not impact the NECC program. They have their own expectations through their student IPs.
Great.
Anything else on this issue? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote then to all those in favor of the change in the Milton summer enrichment program. That's unanimous. Thank you. Anything else from Finance?
Thank you.
We have taken Health and Wellness off Policy Subcommittee.
So we have three policies here in front of you today. We have visited these once before, back on February 6. And what we're proposing is a new residency policy to replace the two that we had previously, JFAA and JFBB. So we're going to delete those two policies and add a new JA, JFAA.
Which we should add was drafted by council.
Right. Well, we discussed that in great detail the last time that we discussed it, but yes, it has been. He said it was-
He said it was drafted by council.
Oh, yes.
All right. And I think we can do this as one vote since it's all tied together.
So moved the elimination of policy JFAA, JFBB, and the approval of policy, revised policy JFAA.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Walker and seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Anything else from Policy Subcommittee?
But we will have a big pile from us at our next meeting. We've been busy at-
We've been busy at work.
Busy little beavers.
Is that a threat?
No, it's a, it's something-
Yeah, kind of.
All right, Citizen Speak topic response from prior citizen speakers? No? Agenda items for our next meeting? Our next meeting is in two weeks. Ms. Kelly?
Just the class size chart. I was a little taken aback by the number of new students that were, you know, referred to in the Tucker School presentation, and just would like to see what, what are the class sizes now? So I would love for that to be a, you know, a monthly just update, just so that we have a sense of where the movement is.
It's just for our greenfall.
I'll put one in the greenfall next week.
I think our meeting is in three weeks, is it?
Sorry?
We have a meeting in three weeks. Two weeks or three weeks?
We have one in two and another in three, I believe. I think we have three this month. We have the 20th and the 27th.
We just had a conversation about that.
Check on that, but I, that's my recollections, we have three this month.
We do.
Anything else for future agenda items? Any other citizen speakers for tonight? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to move into executive session for two purposes, collect negotiation strategy with the Milton Educators Association and contract negotiations for non-union personnel, specifically the community schools. Not to return to open session, but to adjourn directly from executive session. I have a motion to that.
We need a roll call.
Yeah, we do, but I need to have it moved first before I can have a roll call.
Sorry. So moved.
Ms. Sheridan moved it, Ms. Kelly has seconded it, I hear. Ms. Padear?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
The Sheridan, myself, yes. Ms. Douglas Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you all, good evening, get well married.